Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, September 6th to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence for whatever it is you'd like to think about. Thank you. Please stand and join Alderman Jobson in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornette?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobgen?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. We begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who is watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you'd please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to talk to anybody on the council or any agenda item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any one individual. We will be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. We have one public hearing this evening. It's in Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 13th Street, Brown Street to Scott Street resurfacing project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. We have one proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month, and that will be read by Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Ortiz, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's an honor to read this, being Hispanic myself. Proclamation reads, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor and celebrate the many ways Hispanic Americans could contribute to the success of our country, and whereas the Hispanic population in Davenport is strong and vibrant and a key part of the fabric of our city, providing a positive and profound influence on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. And whereas during the National Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Davenport recognizes the contributions made by and the importance of the presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Davenport reaffirms that diversity is one of our country's greatest strengths and also acknowledges that the Hispanic leaders who have stayed in the struggle for equal justice to ensure that everyone in this nation can contribute their talents and have the opportunity to thrive. And whereas, as Hispanics continue to enrich our community's character and shape our common future, they strengthen America's promise and affirm the narrative of American unity and progress. And now, therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Davenport, and encourage all citizens to take this opportunity to celebrate the contributions that have been and continue to be made by Hispanic Americans. I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Proclamation carries. I will meet Sergio Mendoza and Louisa Ewerd on behalf of the Greater Quad City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at the podium, please.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz, for presenting this proclamation again this year, and thank you to the city of Davenport for always being a great partner with the Hispanic and Latino community. And we would like to invite you all to celebrate with us at this year's Mexican Independence Day Parade in East Moline on the 17th of September. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next items, petitions and communications. Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the areas of discussion. The first area is community development. We have public safety, public works, and finance. And community development will be discussed by Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items on our agenda this evening. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-02, being the request of Revold Farms, Inc. to rezone approximately 231.26 acres of land located south of Sloper Town Road and west of Hillendale Road from SAG Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council comments. Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number two is also a third consideration ordinance for case RW 23-03, being the request of William Taylor to vacate approximately 101 feet of unimproved right-of-way of Emerald Drive and Crystal Creek 8th Edition. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council with comment. Seeing no one, item number two will move on. And our final item, number three, is a resolution approving case F-23-11, being the request of William Taylor for a final plat of Crystal Creek 9th Edition of four-lot subdivision on 9.06 acres located at 3051 and 3100 Emerald Drive. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council. No one from the council. This item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I move that items one, two, and three be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a second consideration ordinance mending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96, entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 11th Street along the south side from Prospect Terrace to Judson Street thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. Item number two, resolution approving street lane and public ground closures on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Divine Creations, Unity in the Community, a fifth ward celebration, 311 East Locust Street, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, September 9th, 2023. Closure, north-south alley between East Locust Street and Kirkwood Boulevard and Iowa Street and Pershing Avenue from East Locust Street, south to 313 East Locust Street. Please note, this is requested to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Davenport Community Schools, North High Homecoming Parade, Thursday, September 21st, 2023, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. closures. Please control northbound Division Street from Wood Intermediate to Northwest Boulevard. Northwest Boulevard from Division Street to West 56th Street. West 56th Street to Oak Brook Road. Oak Brook Road to West 57th Street. West 57th Street to Marquette Street. Marquette Street to West 60th Street. West 60th Street to Myrtle Street. Myrtle Street to West 59th Street. West 59th Street to Vine Street. Vine Street to West 58th Street. West 58th Street to Gaines Street. Gaines Street to the finish at North High School. Next, St. Paul the Apostle Back-to-School Block Party, 10:07 East Rush Home Street, 12:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., Saturday, September 23rd, 2023. Closure, East Rush Home Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. And lastly, Anton Knack-Vandevier East Good Neighbor Project Block Party, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, October 7th, 2023. Closure, East Rush Home Street from the first alley east of Brady Street to Pershing Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. Item number three, a motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. Again, I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Divine Creations, Unity in the Community, a fifth ward celebration, 311 East Locust Street, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, September 9th, 2023. Outdoor music, DJ over 50 dB. Please note, this is requested to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Palmer College of Chiropractic Homecoming, 1,000 Brady Street, 8:30 p.m. for approximately 20 minutes, Saturday, September 16th, 2023. Fireworks over 50 dB. Next, Davenport Community Schools, North High School Homecoming Parade. There is an attached parade route online. This is from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Thursday, September 21st, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. And last, Our Lady of Victory Catholic Church, Our Lady of Victory Parish Picnic, 4105 North Division Street, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Sunday, September 24th, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. And last, we have item number four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those listed under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. You can read everything before asking for comment. First, Jimmy O's Saloon, 2735 Telegraph Road, outdoor event, September 9th. License type, Class C liquor. Please note, this is requested to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Capitol Theater, 330 West 3rd Street, new license, license type, Class C liquor. Also, please note, this is requested to be voted on later on in this agenda. And then, Hy-Vee Market Cafe, 4064 East 53rd Street, extended outdoor area, October 5th. License type, Class C liquor on premises. And then, lastly, here we have those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read but are on the agenda for review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, those items will move on, and I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set our agenda, noting those items to be requested later on.
I move that all items be put on the consent agenda, apart from the items that will be voted on later in the evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, that closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 13th Street, Brown Street to Scott Street resurfacing project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the Independence Drive Reconstruction Project by Iron Works LLC of Long Grove, Iowa in the amount of $326,334.05. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution awarding a contract for the 2023 Residential Alley Resurfacing Program to Langland Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $479,738.26. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a one-year contract with a possible one-year extension for the 2023-24 longline pavement marking to Ostrom Painting and Sand Blasting of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $245,980. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for Silver Creek Stabilization Seating and Maintenance Project to Miller Trucking and Escavating of Silver, Illinois in the amount of $180,880. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the West 83rd Street and North Zenith Avenue Extension Project to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $2456,789. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for construction administration and inspection services for the Russell Industrial Park, North Zenith Avenue and West 83rd Street Extension Project to origin design of Davenport, Iowa in amount not to exceed $109,600. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding a contract for the Warren Street, West 9th Street to West 14th Street Mill and Overlay Project, the Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $565,879. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the purchase of one-street flusher truck from Kilburg Equipment of Sebula, Iowa in the amount of $240,483 using state of Minnesota procurement contract. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the purchase of one Roscoe Oil Distributor Truck from Road Machinery and Supplies of East Moline, Illinois in the amount of $259,349 using Sourcewell Contract 06011122-B2L. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of calcium chloride for the 2023-2024 winter season to Silico LLC of Hillsdale, Illinois as the primary supplier, and Jericho Service Incorporated of Indianola, Iowa, and Ocean Incorporated Davenport, Iowa as backup suppliers. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of anti-icing chemicals for the 2023-24 winter season to SNI Solutions of Geneseo, Illinois as the primary supplier, and Ocean Incorporated Davenport, Iowa as the backup supplier. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 13 is a motion approving the purchase of one Booming Tandem Roller from Road Machinery and Supplies of East Moline, Illinois in the amount of $71,250 using Sourcewell Contract 032119-BAI. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, will you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to move all items to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And the agenda is set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornette will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have just one item on finance this evening, and that item is a resolution awarding the contract for the Dos Splash and Play Project to Henley Group LLC of Muscatine, Iowa in the amount of $539,550. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. It's just nice to see this project moving forward. It's going to be a great addition to the west side of Davenport, so thank you.
I agree. Seeing no one else, I'll let you know that below on our agenda, we have our purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those individually, but they're listed there for your information. Alderman Cornette, would you please set our finance agenda?
I move that item one be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornette. Next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? We have multiple, but first, we may need a motion to suspend the rules so we can vote on these items now. So, is there a motion for suspension of the rules? There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Dunn?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Cornette?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Jobgen?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended, so now I'll read the particular items. First is a resolution approving a street lane or public ground closure on the list of dates and times to hold an outdoor event. Divine Creations, Unity in the Community, a fifth ward celebration, 311 East Locust Street, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, September 9th, 2023. The closure is the north-south alley between East Locust Street and Kirkwood Boulevard and Iowa Street and Pershing Avenue from East Locust Street, south to 313 East Locust Street. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from aldermen or women? Very good. Brian, please call the roll for this resolution.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobgen?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
An abstention.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Cornette?
Yes.
Looks like, I'm sorry, eight yeses, one no, and one abstention, Your Honor.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. The next motion is a motion approving a noise variance request on the list of date and time for an outdoor event. Divine Creations, Unity in the Community, a fifth ward celebration, 311 East Locust Street, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, September 9th, 2023. Outdoor music, DJ over 50 dB. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move this motion? Motion and a second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Kelly?
An abstention.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobgen?
No.
Cornette?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Looks like eight yeses, one no, and one abstention, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion passes. The next one is a motion approving a liquor license application. It's a new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, Ward 1, Jimmy O's Saloon, 2735 Telegraph Road, outdoor event, September 9th, license type C. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move this motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jobgen?
No.
And Cornette?
No.
Looks like eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion passes. The next one is a motion approving a liquor license application, new license, new owner, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, Ward 3, Capitol Theater, 330 West 3rd Street, new license, license type C. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move the motion? Motion and a second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Cornette?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobgen?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion passes. The next area, is there any public with business? Anybody who is public, please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes. The microphone's above you. Please, we'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember our decorum and rules, and thank you for getting in line. First person, please. You'll have five minutes.
Hey, it's Davenport. I thought last week was, not last week, but the week before, with the fact that we're trying to rewrite history on the fact of a demolition that we have. That more than approved between our newspapers and word of mouth out of people on this council, on their business pages, that, you know, solidified that there was a call for an early demolition. To the point that one of the people on this thing, on this council that are trying to do good for their community is now being questioned and going to have been voted off, yet, again, you have so many issues within this council. 2013, there was an issue with a person on this council, and yet, they're still sitting up here. Much worse than worse. Of Mayor.
Point of order, Your Honor. Point of order.
Thank you, ma'am. So please.
What was that?
Point of order. So please, no personal attacks. Thank you.
A test, Mayor, which I can speak on for sexual harassment. And yet, sir. So why are we going to make a vote to get rid of somebody on this council? Or worse? I mean, are we adults? Can we take a little criticism for being called names? I've been called names. I just, I don't, I don't get it. It just seems like the people that are really trying to do good for this community are being blackballed, are being silenced, are being trying to, you know, find ways to get rid of people. You have people making more money than what they deserve, have more power than what they ought to have. And people are being paid for not being here. I, I just don't get it. I mean, I wish I could stay home from my job and not get paid, or still be able to get paid, but I'm not doing my job. I'm not, you know, returning phone calls. I'm not dealing with constituents' issues. You know, I have friends that live in wards that have, are still trying to be addressed, but yet, this person is still being paid for a job that's not being done. If I did that, I'd be fired. Why can't that be voted? Can we vote to, to, you know, knock somebody's seat off? Because they haven't shown up for weeks? I mean, I, I think that would be only fair to be able to do. For issues that have already been dealt with, if you read the paper, Houston Times, a lot of the issues are already dealt with. So why all of a sudden now am I trying to get rid of somebody? Pretty awful funny right before election. And I'm tired of the words. People running to the people that are rerunning this promises of what you're going to do to change this community, actions. That is where it's going to lie, actions. Two, two years ago, we were told about, you know, inspections being dealt with. Well, if they were dealt with, we would have the Davenport still standing right now. We would not have other buildings being condemned right now, if that was ever dealt with. So, if you're going to run a campaign, whoever it is, make sure your actions match your, what you're trying to say, because this would not have happened. We would not have condemned buildings. We would not have other buildings down, on downtown or around this city almost falling down, or people dealing with black mold, or worrying about, you know, how they're going to pay, you know, but they're living in filth because of, you know, slum lords. And how is that okay? I keep saying that. I, I, you guys live in nice homes and nice neighborhoods. How could you understand, I guess?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, please?
Hi, my name is Gary Eklund, and I live in Davenport, Iowa, which, as far as I'm concerned, without exception, the most white supremacist city government in the United States, the most white, wealth, income landlord, government employee, extreme wage inequality supremacist city government in the United States of America today. And I mean every word of that sincerely, from experience and from multiple years of knowledge. And as I read last month, I have letters going back to 2021 documenting that, which on Monday, at the very latest, will be going to Attorney General Kristen Clark asking for a full-fledged investigation into the city of Davenport. I want to share with you what I hope will be the saddest, one of the saddest artworks that I ever do. It is a photograph of the wreckage of 324 Main. It is very, very sad. Thanks to some of the criminal act- Thanks to some of the criminal actions, what I believe are criminal actions by the city government, I've decided to do some art sales, and as well as regular art, some other more political stuff, which this is. And the title of this, which is for sale on the interwebs or whatever you call it, I'm learning, it's called "Some People Matter, Some People Don't." I know I don't. Description: The final wreckage of 324 Main Street, Davenport, Iowa, 2023. Davenport City Hall visible back right. So close, a quarterback could have thrown a football from City Hall and hit the years-long slow-motion collapsing wall that they could not address because they were too busy declaring me inferior and my art and paints and brushes illegal, and tomatoes and grapevines and organic fertilizer illegal, and declaring it illegal for me to hang laundry out to dry in my yard than for them to pick on a superior wealthy landlord. A city government, an illegal, and a police, and a 1950's style, deep south-style neighborhood inspections department, all have got to have priorities. As people at the top, and have said to me personally, it's the job of the city to go after lowlifes on behalf of the higher-class citizens. For the last 15 years or more, for the last 15 or more years, I drove the alley running from Harrison Street to Main between 3rd and 4th Street at least 10 or 15 times a month. For the last few years, I always yelled at pedestrians to get away from that wall because for years it looked like it could collapse and kill any people nearby and crush any, any vehicles close by. People in City Hall saw that as less important than eradicating seedless Concord grapes and red carnations and gold duster lissum and shoy evening primrose and milkweed and tomato cages in my yard. It was literally in real life more important to destroy religiously significant Native American artwork on display in my yard than to worry about collapsing in plain-site apartment building. Even more important to destroy a ceramic manger scene I inherited from a friend and liked so much I had out on a picnic table until it was destroyed. Why didn't they care? I think I know why they didn't care. I have a GoFundMe campaign. The city of Davenport, after destroying my, my, uh, most of the plants in my yard and my laundry and other stuff, sent me a bill for $2,143.75, which I have asked that they zero out. I have a GoFundMe campaign. It's Davenport Whistleblower Gary Eklund. Again, it's GoFundMe, Davenport Whistleblower Gary Eklund. I have not heard back whether or not they're going to waive my $2,143.75 bill. They destroyed most of the plants in my yard, my laundry, my art, my paints, my brushes. After sending me a letter saying I needed to fix my gutters within days, they came over and they not only destroyed all of the gutters that I had purchased to fix up the gutters that weren't perfect, they literally ripped off the existing gutters from my house. The gutters that came with the house that I'm paying for, they ripped them off. And I shouted at the supervisor who was on site, and I said, wait a minute, those, those gutters came with the house. I paid for those gutters. Those are tight-fitting gutters. I said, you're ripping them off my house. And she said, she said, oh, no, those gutters weren't attached. They were sitting six, they were sitting an inch away from where they're supposed to be. And I said, well, it'll take me 30 seconds. I'll put those gutters back on. They're tight-fitting. They came with the house. I bought them. I paid for them. And she said, no, no, no. The fact that they're an inch away from where they're supposed to be means I get to put them in the garbage truck, and you can't stop me. And the Davenport police with their guns and handcuffs were there to make sure that she got to rip my gutters off the house that I paid for and put them in the garbage truck and then send me a bill for it. And I noticed they, they even ripped down a section that was like, what is it, 10 feet off the ground? They ripped down a section of gutter that was on, on my house from 10 feet off the ground. So they not only, they not only sent me a letter saying I needed to fix my gutters immediately, which is more than they ever did for 324 Main, but then they came over and destroyed the gutters that I had purchased, and they ripped the gutters off my house, and they ripped the gutters 10 feet off my house, and then they sent me a bill for $2,143.75. And I've got to say, I'm asking again, the city council should appoint us
Thank you, sir.
A special investigator.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello? My name is David Esri Sidran. I am a resident of the 3rd Ward. Through Freedom of Information Act requests, we have assembled over 600 documents that detail how the city of Davenport repeatedly ignored every warning sign leading up to the collapse of 324 Main Street. This is the actual timeline, and I have the documents to prove it. May 27, 2023, 2:51 p.m. Davenport Fire Department arrives at 324 Main Street in response to a 911 call. Quote, "In regards to a large multi-story building with bricks, quote, bulging out." Quote, "Chief One also arrived on scene and stated this matter has already been addressed, and there was no further action needed." Davenport Fire Department was at 324 Main Street for less than four minutes. This is right here. This is the official incident report, right here, obtained via FOIA. Let that sink in for a minute. Who told the chief that the matter has been addressed? Who said no further action was needed? I'm going to find out. I don't care how long it takes, but I'm going to find out. May 28, 2023, 4:55 p.m. The center-west section 324 Main Street collapses. Five people were trapped inside. Three are dead or dying. May 29, 2023, Davenport Fire Marshal Jim Morrison, Acting Chief Building Official Jake Ralphs write in a public letter, quote, "The city is demanding the immediate demolition of the structure. Therefore demolition will commence upon securing a contractor." May 29, 2023, 12:46 p.m. The city administrator, can't mention her name, wrote in an email right here, addressed to elected officials, that's you guys, stating, quote, "We have authorized the emergency demolition contract with Valley Construction, who has mobilized on site." May 29, 2023, 12:59 p.m. Alderman at large, can't say his name, written in an email, quote, "On Monday, May 29, 2023, at approximately 9:45 a.m., the Davenport Fire Department transitioned to a recovery operation." Quote, "There are no known fatalities." That means less than 17 hours after 324 Main Street collapsed, the Davenport Fire Department has stopped all rescue operations. May 29, 2023, 2:07 p.m. 3rd Ward Alderwoman, can't mention her name, sends out an email to 3rd Ward residents stating, quote, "Emergency demolition will likely begin tomorrow." May 29, 2023, 8 p.m. Lisa Brooks appears alive in a window at 324 Main Street over 24 hours after the collapse and over 10 hours after the Davenport Fire Department announced the end of all rescue operations. August 27, 2023, an alderwoman, can't mention her name, wrote in a letter to the editor of the Quadsy Times, quote, "What is not factual is your August 20th claim that, quote, 'demolition plans were announced before the building had been swept for survivors.'" Yeah. Here are the facts supported by these documents. One, the city of Davenport ignored years of inspection reports calling for 324 Main Street to be evacuated. Two, the day before 324 Main Street collapsed, the Davenport Fire Department showed up, looked at a bulging wall that would collapse within hours, and four minutes later left, saying that no further action was needed. Three, after a cursory sweep, a cursory sweep of 324 Main Street that failed to find Lisa Brooks, the Davenport Fire Department announced that all rescue operations had ended by 9:45 a.m. Three hours later, the city administrator wrote that Valley Construction was on site and ready to begin demolition immediately. The city of Davenport was sure in a hurry to bury its mistakes. Why are there no investigations? Who told Chief One not to investigate 324 Main Street? Why hasn't the city administrator been fired? And Mr. Mayor, you need to resign and displace.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Folks, please refrain from clapping. Please, ma'am.
Kelly Sidran, 1502 Clay Street, 3rd Ward. You all just can't stop disappointing me, can you? You just can't. You can't. I don't know what news station you've been listening to, but thinking that you can just keep telling a lie over and over and over again will make it the truth. It doesn't. The truth is the truth. What happened is what happened. And why you all have not fired the people who have allowed three people to die and a young woman to lose her leg, why you have not fired these people is beyond me. I don't know what the mean girls got on you, but get your house in order, because it's all going to come out, plain and simple. I don't know what they have on you, but stop it. You have a responsibility to the city. You have a responsibility to us. Stop disappointing us and do what needs to be done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Swender, Davenport, Rock Island. I've spoken many a time, but I'm a little more proud of Davenport. Many of it stepped up to run for electors. This should send a message to this council that not happy. This should show the council that we, as a group, deserve answers. You have done some of the finest work, but this is some of the poorest. So what do we do? We have lawsuits. We have counter suits now. We have this person suing, that person suing. Will it cover? Will it bankrupt the city? The new council that gets elected's got to clean this mess up.
Yep.
And it's not going to be pretty. You know, you can point this person, that person, this person, that person, emails, whatever, but it all boils down to one thing. We weren't prepared as a city for any of this. And now we've gone nuts, trying to, oh, we need to do this and that. I've worked buildings. They've been sold to owner, to owner, to owner, and I've seen them go downhill after I've worked them. Thirty-seven years. I took pride in my work. I didn't work for a slumlord, that's why. I worked for someone who cared about the people. Because if you don't have a tenant, you ain't going to make any money. And if you have a happy tenant, you don't have to worry about paying somebody a month's rent to put someone else in there. But all this boils down to one thing. We failed, period. There's no ifs, there's no ands, there's no buts. Now heads are starting to roll, documents are getting released. All we've ever asked any of you is the truth, period. We've asked for updates. I understand there's investigation, this and that, but what's the status of the investigation of the owner? We haven't heard word one. We haven't heard the words of these three people out of your mouths for weeks. They were us, Davenport. They were our people. My son got killed years ago. He was part of this community. We have t-shirts up. How many members have been shot in this community? Shots fired. We've had riots. We've had people killed. We're a better city. We have a department that is stretched beyond its limits. But we're getting there. We're trying to fix one. Let's fix the rest of it. You are our representatives, period. Thousands didn't want something, you did it anyway. Now we want answers, and what's happening? Eh, lies. Misquotes, lies, whatever. I don't care. We have been here for over three months, folks. Where's our answers? Anybody tell me? Anybody point me in the right direction? Well, the answer came when people signed up. It's time for a change. It's time to do things differently. Some of you have none running against you. Some do, some don't, but you know what? People have spoken. You better start listening. And you're going to kick a councilperson out? I'm missing my representative for weeks. Can I call into my job?
No.
But you know what? This council's pretty much done what it wants to do, even if us folks say no. So you know what? We'll see what happens in November. I wish you all well. I wish you the best, but it is time for a change. And we, the people have spoken, and I hope all of you take notice, even the ones that didn't have anyone run against them. It's a time for change, period. I've come up here for over 11 years. I've asked councilmen, I've asked mayors, everybody. What can I do for the city? No one's ever even talked to me. Amazing, ain't it? I care enough to be here to speak. I care enough to try and make a better city.
Thank you, sir.
So I thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Wendy Bartels, and I'm on this 7th Ward. I live on Goose Creek. I would like to speak to you today about the Goose Creek Bike Path Project. This is to connect the existing Goose Creek Trail to the Duck Creek Trail. I would like to speak to you about the section between Kimberly Road and 33rd Street, and why this needs to stop immediately. First, I understand this project was voted on in 2021. We saw something online regarding this April of 2022. I asked questions, but I didn't get a lot of answers. I later saw a surveyor out a few months and asked him some questions. I was told there are property markers in the creek, and they were thinking about putting the bike path on the other side of the creek. I didn't think much more of it, but we received a letter in the mail in March of '23 requesting to use the back of our property as a construction easement. That's when I started knocking on doors to my neighbors. Four of us received those letters, and only one other person on the block knew about it. We had a neighborhood meeting at Public Works a few weeks ago, and I feel like all our concerns were dismissed. Why are we upset? Many reasons. We're in the, excuse me. We are in the highest risk level of floodplains and pay the highest flood insurance premiums. The plan is to put the bike path on top of the creek, and they are moving the creek. It will not be as wide. There are power lines and a railroad track on the other side. We are concerned that we will flood more, but I'm told that a computer model that is being used is projecting that there'll be no more or no less flooding. I don't really believe the computer program was around when the creek was in my basement. It's been there three times in 20 years, and Mother Nature's going to do what she wants to do. We were told there were four options for the bike path and that this was the cheapest one. So we are dealing with this for the cheapest option. The bike path is a few feet away from our property line. Why is that? Because there's a creek there. Our house, one house will have it one foot away from the property line. When he asked about it at the neighborhood meeting, he was told, well, that isn't your property. Some neighbors have their property markers in the creek. They will have to build their property out to the property line, then allow two feet of grass, 10 feet of the bike path, and then another two feet of grass. I would like to invite everyone out to see what I see at our property firsthand. There isn't a lot of room left for the creek. Our main concern is the flooding issue. I asked at the meeting, what if they were wrong? I was informed again of this computer model. I asked if they were willing to gamble on all of our properties and all our family's safety from unnecessary flooding. Again, the computer program. If we do not allow them onto our property to do the necessary work and allow them to grade our land to the bike path, when they are done, we may flood more. I kind of feel bullied at this point. Our recent letter was delivered a week ago stating that we need to pick either a privacy fence, a hedge row, or have nothing installed to separate the bike path from our lives. It sounds good until you find out you're financially responsible to maintain the option of your choice. Flooding will have an impact on anything installed and could become very costly for homeowners. Our deadline to make our decision is September 7. If we respond, are we saying that we're agreeable? People are scared. I have neighbors that are now highly concerned or even terrified for their safety if this continues to happen. One of them said to me, well, when we flood, they will fix it. I, I had to laugh. I told him, I was told that we were in a flood zone, and we're going to flood, and that's when it occurred to me, if we do flood more, that's what we will be told. Just because we have the authority to do something doesn't make it right. I urge you to look at the other three options for this bike path. Let's find one that will keep your residents safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jessica Knolls, 2nd Ward, if there is a 2nd Ward now.
Um, so I'm coming to you today because, over the weekend, we hadn't yet, another homeless person shot and killed. I was told by a alderman, supposedly there is no homeless problem. That's funny, because I counted twenty homeless people on the side of the road, sitting outside of abandoned building, just from Marquette to here, coming across Sixth Street. I mean, I get it, some people choose to live that way, as I've worked with the homeless for fifteen plus years now. And there's others that just don't have any type of support, rather it be mental support, financial support, or health support, to be able to get a job. My concern is, is, you know, I'd really like to see some of these candidates that are running or rerunning to come up with some type of better plan for the homeless besides humility of Mary, King's Harvest, which you have to be out of the building for so many hours. Some have health issues that aren't supposed to be out in the sun or the heat. Not to mention, extreme heat can be deadly to any of us, whether we're healthy or not. So, and then on a side note, I was having a conversation with a very, very smart friend of mine. And he came to me and he said, you know, the reason why they don't take you guys seriously is because you don't look like them, you don't talk like them, you don't act like them. Some of the stupid stuff I say up here, I say it intentionally. I'm a whole lot smarter than you may think. Not to mention, regardless if it's not me with the brains, we work as a unit, unlike some other people we know. If I don't got the knowledge, someone else does. If I don't got the money to pay for it, someone else does. And as far as dressing like ya, I'm glad I got the taste I got. But that's neither here nor there. So you may look at us, you may look down on us every week. But just know, we do our research, we come up here, we speak facts, we don't talk about something we know completely nothing about. Now, which brings me to a whole nother subject. You guys are worried about voting off a alderman tomorrow? Like, yet we're still waiting for answers. I mean, there's higher priorities than a few name-calling or geography, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Name-calling to, uh, deplamatory, that's it. Comments to each other. I mean, we have extreme priorities that oversee that. And I'm sorry, but if you can't take a few bad names or bad words, we need somebody with a stronger heart on the board. I mean, more of a caring heart, too. And some may look at me, week in, week out, with this dead scare, dead stare. Or smirk. Some of you may listen to me, some of you may not. But at the end of the day, just know, whatever you may try to hide, we have the facts. And rather we have to screenshot it, print it for ya. It gets printed. So therefore, trying to rehire, rewrite history was probably not the best idea. All I gotta say is, I hope you guys think long and hard, hard to decide who's actually for our city, even tomorrow, than when it comes to election, because, I mean, you are just a disgrace. Disappointment, too. Can't forget that one. But I just know one thing. Regardless what you may think of me, if I'm smart, if I'm dumb, I'm just the average working class, I do stand with Cornet.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. I once had the privilege of serving an Easter meal to the homeless in our community. It was one of the most humbling, yet heartbreaking things I have ever been blessed to do. I saw a man so weak that he had to lay on the ground outside of a cafe on Vine as he waited to be fed, and that broke my heart. This happens every single day. I will also never forget looking into the sad eyes I have ever seen in my life that day. They looked beyond exhausted, and there was no spark of life left in them. I said hi to him, and I asked him what he would like, and he responded in the softest, gentlest voice I have ever heard, "I'm going to die today." I was caught off guard, and I thought I had to have heard him wrong. But just then, the elderly man standing next to him put his arm around him, smiled at him, drew him close, and said, "No, you're not. I'm going to take care of you." Wow. Those two men were living out what God tells every single one of us to do. John 15:13 says, "Greater love has no one than this to lay down one's life for a friend." They were also living out Ecclesiastes 4:10. "If either of them falls down, one can help the other up, but pity anyone who falls and has no one to help them up." I don't know if they even realized they were living out what God commands us to do or not, but he will surely reward them for that anyway. As a society, it is our job to take care of one another above all else. We are called to help those who can't help themselves. Philippians 2:3, 4 says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, rather humility and value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interest of others." It saddens me to say that our city does not take care of the homeless or the less fortunate citizens. Week after week, I sit here, and I hear people go on and on about historical buildings, alcohol, and big money projects. I have yet to see anything on the agenda that will help the most vulnerable people in our city, and that makes me angry. Did any of you even know that we lost another homeless person to violence just a few days ago? Winter is coming, and we are nowhere close to having a safe place for them. We do not need any more loss of life when it arrives, because they have nowhere safe or warm to go. How do any of you sleep at night knowing this? Maybe your deep pockets and hefty bank accounts give you the luxury of sleeping in a place with a fancy roof over your head, but please don't forget that money can disappear as fast as it appeared, because it's temporary and not eternal. What do we have to do to get these people's needs on the agenda and not just people's unnecessary wants? I would strongly suggest you go out into the community, if you have not been, and that you get down in the trenches and follow the oath that you swore that you would uphold to help and actually get these people the help that they need. We have not forgotten what happened over at Main Street. That did not have to happen. We don't need any more blood on anybody's hands. That is on your hands, those of you that chose to not follow through. We have not forgotten about the laptop incident of 2013. You guys are wanting to vote out people for words or whatever have you, but stop and think about the things that you guys have said and done. He is a great man. We need more people like him, and we're behind you, Mr. Cornet.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Calling on the right name, Jesus. Oh goodness, yes, we need you, Lord. My name is LaShawn Dixon. I am, I'm currently part of the Fifth Ward, where I have the lovely Mr. Kelly. And then I will be going, I hope, I'll be going to Mr. Cornet. I just wanna know, well, let me just start by saying this. How much longer are y'all gonna continue to embarrass Davenport, Iowa? How much longer? Embarrassment. I grew up in Rock Island. I chose to move to Iowa, to Davenport, Iowa. But how much longer are you gonna choose to embarrass us? How much? To watch the Channel 6 news last night? After what we've been through already? To watch that news last night? That's a bit much. And my friends always come up here and speak about what the Bible says, but I remember an old thing my daddy used to tell me. Money is the root to all evil. All of it. And that is nothing, except for a few people. I see a lot of down-to-earth, I mean, not a lot, but a few down-to-earth people. So I can't say this about shoe necessarily. But if the shoe fits it, if the shoe fits, please wear it. Money is the root to all evil. All of it. All of it. We must stop. This is like a mini version of what's going on in America, but right here in our city, with our own city government, a place that, how many people live in Davenport? Can anybody tell me, yell it out real quick? But it's such a small area, but it's embarrassing. It's a travesty. Corrupt. If some people would've stepped down on May 28th, or just said, I love this from Mr. Edward, "I was wrong. I did wrong." Nobody's admitting that they did wrong. There's nothing wrong, this, I, I messed up. I was wrong. There's nothing wrong with saying that. And all I see is a bunch of backbiting, and, and wanna throw people off, and, and tell everybody business and everything like that, whatever. It, it don't make any sense to me. I've been here for three months, and let me speak about this man. Mr. Cornet, I have, he's been quiet. He hasn't said nothing. Yeah, he speaks to us, but it's just like he got a trap over his mouth. But when it comes down to voting, what we need to get voted through, I don't see nothing wrong with this man. He has tried to show us love and compassion to us, and all you're hurting. And then you're gonna do this to him? But no matter what happens, us people that has been sitting here for the last three months, almost four months, we kind of see who he is. It doesn't matter what y'all say he is. He showed his heart to us. And that's all we know of him. That's all we know of him. Because it's the way he votes. He doesn't have to say much, because we see what, what the, behind the lines. We see what's behind your eyes. So to the audience, I'm gonna say this, y'all. We have two ears and one mouth for a reason. Look into these people. It will tell you everything. Y'all wanna keep the rich, rich, and the poor, poor. And I'm telling y'all, we aren't here working. Those days are over. They're over. Y'all have been caught in a trap that you cannot get out of. Mr. Cornet, you have my prayers. You have my love. And I hope all goes well with you, and I hope you're my Seventh Ward Alderman. I really do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
James Woods, Eighth Ward. We are thirty-four days away from a primary. The people elected Seventh Ward Alderman? The people should be the ones to decide whether he goes or not. Not a board of clowns. They voted him in, they take him out. Kind of like the signatures we had on you. Where do you guys think you have the right to take him out? Just because he doesn't fit, doesn't align with you, doesn't vote with you guys? All the elections are supposed to be us voting you guys in. Let them vote him out. You're so worried about it. Make him get on the phone like her. It's only three more weeks, three and a half weeks. He can, he can get on the phone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is LaShawn Dixon. I'm, uh, with the Fifth Ward. So I did this research probably a couple of weeks ago, but I decided not to say nothing about it. But, um, hearing the people tonight talking, I decided that I should bring this up. Thirty point two percent of families in Davenport make them less than $35,000. Let me repeat that one more time. Thirty point two percent of Davenport families make less than $35,000. As we know, that building across the street was a low-income building. Most low-income is in that bracket. So it, everything is coming together. It, I don't even know if that, because this is off the Davenport website. Does that continue on with the homeless people downtown, too? I would like to know that, or are they not even a part of the income bracket? So maybe if you hear it from another mouth, because I've seen some of you earlier today, so I know you're sick of seeing my face. So maybe if you see it from a face that you have been in the same room with, you would take it serious. We have people in our community that don't have enough. There's not enough housing. They're homeless. They're dealing with a struggle, whatever that struggle may be. The reason why they don't have homes is all put together. I remember I went to a ward meeting, and they told me, "If you go anywhere in the United States, that you are going to see homeless people living underneath bridges and on roads everywhere." That does not mean it should be Davenport, Iowa. Everyone wants something good happen. We wanna say, oh, we're so proud of Davenport. Where's the pride in our people? No matter if they don't have a dollar in their pocket, where's the pride in that? One other thing, and I'm gonna leave you with this. Aldermen and city officials need to stay out of the business of elections, whether they are new or whether they're sitting here already. The mudslinging and everything is not necessary. Mr. Cornet, I hope that everything goes well for you. I appreciate everything that you've done for us so far, all the communication, and blessings to you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Beal, anything? A motion to adjourn. Oh, what am I talking, I apologize. Well, an order would move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with counsel and matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5. Motion has been moved and seconded. And please note, the public, to everyone here, uh, we will adjourn from, uh, the executive session and will not return to chambers. So please call the roll to go to executive session. Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Cornet? Jobjen?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman? And Lee?
Yes.
Nye, yes, Mr. Honor. Very good. We'll go to executive session. We will not return here. Thank you.